You ready? Okay, I'm going to move the appointment of Molly.
Very good.
As the confidential secretary to the fire department at the rate of fourteen dollars and seventy five cents per hour for twelve pa- hours per week uh the working schedule determined by fifteen.
Second on favor, I'm sorry, any discussion on?
It's gonna be temporary?
No, that wasn't.
It's gonna be.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sally, what was her name when you had one?
Molly.
Aye, yes.
Miller. Oh, within all our middle level district.
Uh Ariana did you vote?
I'd also like to move at the same time, uh a thanks to Rihanna Kane who has served
Just my name, sure.
You're voting?
Yes.
Oh yeah, okay, thank you.
For two years as the secretary of the fire department with tanks.
Well, it was two years.
Yeah, she was twenty two thousand dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, she did.
Four years.
As long as I know.
Okay. Uh Brian's telling his age.
I'll s- I'll second that for.
Okay.
Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, thank you.
Right. Yeah, we're.
Alright.
Consent agenda?
You wanna do the consent agenda?
Yeah, I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then down here to the peace park, um Brian, the next two are yours, you wanna take those?
Alright, okay, um.
We've got all the other things on there.
He had several things, he had things on the consent agenda. I know, I added them, yeah, I'm at the bottom.
Yeah, I'm at the bottom.
Yeah, just added them to the bottom.
Okay.
So some brief discussions and I'm kinda looking for your guys' input on it as discuss it briefly over there before. So basically, um, we are coming up on budget season and we are looking into po- possibly uh renewing our contract with Techsmiths, um, the mayor asked them to provide um a contract, a nu- an updated contract based more on what our usage has been of them or wha- what we would need to move forward. Um and I believe everyone has seen the contract at this point, it was for fifteen hours a week, um, a total of uh fifteen hundred dollars a month.
Mm-hmm.
Um, no fifteen hour, fifteen hours a month for fifteen hundred dollars a month.
Like budget carry.
Like, yeah, yes.
Yes, for budget carry, um, so there's that, and then at the end of, or during the last joint town and village meeting, Susan had discussed that they were having problems with their website, Carol Connolly has, who's the supervisor's assistant, has come to some of our tech meetings and discussed their issues, part- partly being their website, partly being they got some recommendations from the comptroller regarding security of their online systems. Um and the supervisor had told me that she has a decent sum of money put aside for uh tech services, including the website and their IT. Um, so basically with in thinking about those things and, you know, I I've always thought we should have an IT department within the village.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I I went met, went and met with Carol Connolly and discussed some of the things they're looking for and we kinda came up with the idea that it would be possible to share IT services uh between the town and the village, uh do like twenty hours here, twenty hours there, maybe at a rate of twenty dollars an hour or something to that respect. Um, and for, I mean, what would work out to be a little bit more than we'd be paying Techsmiths for the fifteen hours a month, we'd be getting eighty hours a month if it was twenty dollars an hour. Um, part of the issue with that is uh what we're looking for basically in an IT person. Uh I put, I I'm not that good with this stuff, like I, you know, I have an understanding of some of it, but really when it comes down to like meat and potatoes of like what an IT person should do.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, uh, you know, I'm I'm not really there, so I I think we might have difficulties in hiring or finding a person that we're looking for uh or that would be able to help us.
But we we don't know exactly what qualifications we are searching for.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Um, and part of, part of the question also is is what we're looking, I mean, we have the revised contract, which we have uh five thousand dollars, approximately five thousand dollars a year, and they'll take care of our website for us. However, all that information is trapped with them, and if we come across a better technology or we wanna move on,
Right.
it'll involve a whole new reconstruction process.
Yeah.
So theoretically, what we could do is try to couple in like IT, server maintenance, all of that, with someone who could do web development is like what I'm thinking, and then if we can split that cost, Katie had the idea of in talking about the webpage, having like a Newpalt homepage.
Uh-huh, with a link to each.
And then. Link to each of us, and then also having a link possibly to the fire department, the police department, the school district.
Yeah. I love it.
Because they have all different kinds of things, and then when you Google search Newpalt, you come to this page and then it can kinda direct you based on what kind of question you're looking for, are you looking for a dog license, are you looking for, uh, do you have a, some sort of a road maintenance problem here in the village? Do you, are you looking for something from the school district, am I kind of?
Well, primarily my thought was that anybody who's investigating the Newpalt as an entity doesn't if you're investigating, you don't necessarily know that Newpalt is either a town or a village, and for somebody to get the most complete picture of who Newpalt is, um, if you had like a central page that then spurred you out out to different places, um, it might be more helpful, more user friendly, e- even for the residents. If you wanna know if the school, if schools are closed a- and you Google Newpalt because you don't happen to have it on your, um, in your most used things, it'd be nicer to just bring it up, but then not only could you link off to see the schools are closed, but you could see the town is closed, the village is closed, um.
Sure.
It ju- just in general, it seems tidier, neater, um, anybody who's considering Newpalt's university might wanna be investigating the town, it, a- again, it's a, a, um, one stop shopping is really.
Right. Sure. I mean, had the, the effect of having one giant calendar with everyone's events on it, um, that could all be like linked up from your individual webpages and then you warp off to that website and you can see the events that are for the specific entity. So, I mean, this is something that among online bill pay, which I feel like, you know, we could be looking towards because it would be very cost effective and convenient for a lot of our residents, and expanding our wifi services, and, you know, just providing uh forms and uh subscriptions to certain things, uh information feeds, things like that. It's, it's all the stuff that if we had someone here who could do this tech stuff, you know, on a, on a, on a daily basis, we would be more likely to striving for those goals, like, you know, we hired our planner and he has been able to provide, you know, tons of resources and really, I mean, pushed us forward in the, in the field of.
Yeah.
And this will be a shared service between the town and the village?
Yes, well, that's, one person.
One person, all done.
Mostly with the school district, it's a number of.
It could be the school district as well, yeah.
Cause think about that, they, no, uh, was the, one of the things we, Brian and I were talking about was just call it just newpalt.gov. You know, every government a- agency that is involved in Newpalt.
And all our stuff could go on it?
You could just go, yeah, go to one site, there's, there's no rea- it's just a matter of resource allocation.
Yeah, could revise, how does revise fit into this?
Well, this is, well, this is part of it, we could, we can continue with revise and then try to work it out where it'd be a town, we can maybe do something with the town and have them contribute to us, or we could probably work something out, or we could hire someone who develops websites, scratch revise, and have the IT person just constantly working on our website and building it and making it better.
Yeah.
But again, you know, we've, we've already gone this far, how long do you wanna wait? We have Google Docs up and running, seems to be working pretty well.
I uploaded an eighty page document the other day.
Good.
So, I mean, you know.
You sound very proud.
I was very excited, I was thrilled to be able to.
You know, so.
If the, the packet for this evening's meeting, if you go to the village board page and you look um for today's date, you hit that, you not only bring up the agenda, but the entire packet for, or the redacted packet for tonight.
So, you know.
So everything got on?
Everything but the executive session packet, because that's executive session, but eighty pages went on.
Well, right.
Right, so, I mean, you know, we're, we're in a good spot now, it's not like we're having the issues that we were a, a month or two back, so theoretically we could hold off on the revise, but i- it's a big undertaking to look into hiring this person, and it would still also deal with trying to coordinate with the other two entities and seeing if they're willing to jump into this, and this, this kinda piggybacks on my second thing with having a joint town and village committee because I've heard a lot of, if we don't consolidate, then we're breaking apart, and, you know, the supervisor was very interested in this, but at the same, you know, at the same time, hearing at, you know, two hours earlier, if we don't come together, we're breaking apart, and I don't want, you know, I, I, I would like to look into these cooperation things, but, you know.
I think from a financial standpoint, it makes all the sense in the world.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
But I think we would need a commitment.
Would, well, we would need a commitment, and the other thing I'm thinking is, we need a group of people who would be able to help us identify what we need, identify what the town needs, and then, and then find it, find it in candidates.
Would we, and this is just my usual ignorance question. Would we need the school district in right now, or could we start with just the town?
We could do it just because.
Because it seems to me there are more common needs of the town and the village.
I totally agree with what Brian had.
Right, right.
Mm-hmm.
The, the school district has lots of different needs.
Right.
And they do a lot of their tech stuff with Bosens.
And they're so, and they're so big, they probably have this taken care of to a degree we don't.
Well, they use Bosens for a lot of their, their tech stuff.
But you never know, yeah.
Right.
Huh.
So it would, I mean.
They have systems, they have support structures in place for this kinda thing already, yeah.
Yep, and so it would seem to me our best idea
Right.
would be for it to be the town and the village to begin with.
Right.
And we would share a person.
Right.
I don't know whether that would be a half time, full time person, what you're thinking.
Well, when I, yeah, the, this is, this is details, I spoke with Nancy about it and she had some ideas as to how it would work, but.
Details, details.
So are you looking for concept approvals?
Well, I'm, well, yes, so it's, this is kinda what I'm looking for, is number one, do we think we should hold off from revise a little bit longer and explore this? Number two, alright, so, so the tricky part is finding people, I think I have people, I work with a few gentlemen who are very, very tech savvy, and I think they would be able to help me co- like assess our needs and, and then provide some sort of like description as to what this person would be, and then, and then we could even, they could even help us scan some of the resumes and see if the candidates fit what we're looking for, is basically what I'm thinking, so.
Is there somebody?
Would that be like an ad hoc committee for this exactly?
That's exactly what I was thinking, and I was thinking on, you know, having it as a set number of meetings because, you know, I've been trying to get these guys to just come and be on committees for us, like, like how, you know, join the technology committee, but, you know, they all have their own things going on, so I was thinking.
So it would be a working committee?
It would, I, I was thinking just an ad hoc committee with a set number of meetings and, you know, a set number of hours and we would come up with like.
And then, and an end date.
And an end date, and, and a report, and they would help us, now the, now the.
I love this, by the way.
I think, I think, I think it would be good.
Two seconds. We did approve the concept of a working committee, not an ad hoc committee, the, a working committee that we sort of agreed to that it could be.
Yeah, we, we created that criteria, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we created those criteria to set those up.
There's a specific time, it could be less.
For like a year, a long timeline, right.
Yeah, specific things you gotta get had produced, yeah.
And, and the point of it, as I recall though, cause it was Jason's proposal.
Right.
Is that it had a beginning date, an end date, and a product demand.
Right.
That, yeah, well, that might fit with this because they're all, they all die at the next reorder meeting, so this would die in six, four months anyway.
Right. Right, yeah.
So that would give you the deadline, the, we created, we gotta have a report by June first.
Yeah. Right.
Unless you wanted it in for this budget, like for my budget, which would mean.
Well, that's, well, that's kinda what I'm should, I was thinking like five meetings over the next month or something like that, right.
That, right, then, then you might be able to have something for, for this budget.
Once a week to the end of March.
Um, right, so now the one issue with this is, now let's say we do this and I bring these guys in, you know, three years from now, w- we may have to do this again, or like, you know, the person grows and decides to leave the position because, you know, they, they, you know, gained experience and they've helped us and now they move on. We either have to have them further develop the position, like the description of the position, so we know down the road what we're looking for next.
I think that's a given.
You know, the, I mean, I guess that would be the way to go because.
It had to, because of the rate of technological change anyway, right?
Right, I mean, it's gonna be very difficult, I, I wouldn't be able to do this without their help, and I haven't even a hundred percent recruited their help. But if you guys think this is a good idea, think we can hold off on revise, then the next time I come to you, hopefully I can force these people into helping me and, and have, and have a set proposal as to a five meeting schedule and where we'll go next. And, you know, I'd like to include obviously everyone who's been working with the tech committee, try to find out the demands, ask all of you, you know, for questions.
You don't want me there.
And, and kinda just move on from that, so I mean.
If you have a comparable person on the town board or within the town structure who has equal expertise to yours?
Um, well, I worked with Carol Connolly, she was, she was pretty helpful, but I think it would, I think what I'm gonna have to do is when I go,
Okay.
if I can get these people together and put this committee together, I wanna go ask one of the town board members to sit in on it and help bring in the information, so, because what's gonna end up happening is they're gonna have to bring it back to their board, so if they're interested in moving this forward and doing all that, then hopefully I can just get someone who will come to the meetings with me and help me have a fit and, you know, move on, um, but.
So you're, you're, you're thinking is you'd have the details of the proposal worked out, I mean, even if there's only a couple of them, by our next meeting? For this and the town, both committee?
Well, when it, well, I have to, I have to map out when the next town board meeting is, cause I have to go to there next and all.
Yeah, the, the next week.
Okay, so you wouldn't sure, okay, so maybe the next meeting, but, but.
So maybe our, like, two meetings from now, depending, I don't know.
Okay.
Our last meeting is February.
Yeah, like, yeah, but.
I'd like to move that we at least give Brian our agreement to pursue the idea.
Both, or just the, which one?
Well, yeah, so do you guys?
The whole, the whole thing.
Do you think it's okay to wait on revise and, and try to explore this?
Yeah.
You know, I do, because we're able to put documents up.
Do you want revise in all this? Or do you want to explore it first and see?
No, I, I think that this is something separate, because if, i- if we have them create it, they, they own it.
I would like to go with that. Right, we own it, and then it's ours, oh, we have revise created, and then.
Well, if we, if we have revise created, revise owns it, if we do it this way.
Right.
Is that positive?
Yeah.
We know that.
Yeah.
Cause I didn't see that in the contract.
That was one of the drawbacks to doing it, the mayor brought up, is that, you know, pulling out a bit.
That they own it.
There is, the, the contract is vague in, in that way.
Right.
It's unclear who, and we don't wanna get into that fight.
And it's their, and it's their backend management, and it's their system, so it's not like you could just like, you know, go and pick it somewhere else.
And, and maybe, maybe this isn't a topic for discussion right now, because we haven't gone down this path yet. My only worry in terms of doing this is that whoever is in this position could create something that only they know how to do or work with, and then if they are no longer with us, can we just hire somebody, you know, I mean, they would probably need to be.
Well, that's.
Well, that's what Brian was saying earlier, that, that one of the requirements of this position
Will be creating the next.
is that the person writes the job description
For the next person.
so that anybody could pick it up.
Well, right, not only that, but, but using, but using, like, if they're gonna use WordPress to design it in a way that
Except Sal.
is the most common use and the most simple use, so the next person would be able to pick it up and move on from there.
Or at least someone with a professional background could do.
Right, well.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that mean that, I mean, that would be on us, to hire someone who is technologically capable enough to understand what was designed? Or is there really, is, I, I don't know, this is an issue or?
Well, you could just, you could design it with like Ruby, or you could design it with, uh, you know, with JavaScript, or you could design it with, you know,
Or just people who don't know the certain stuff, right?
There's a million different coding languages.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
Right, so you, so we would want someone, and, and that's why bringing in the, bringing in the crew, that's something they're gonna establish, is
Okay.
what would be the most simple thing that other people would be able to help out with.
And that would be really interfe- it easy for the, for like Katie to interface with it, basically.
Yeah, yes.
Now, is the question, is this worth doing for the village alone in the event the town backed up?
If we could find someone who wanted to work for twenty dollars an hour and would take the position, I would say so, I mean, I don't know how the rest of you thinks.
I mean, it'd be nice if the town would buy into this, because, I mean, two websites.
Right, right. Right, since it's a.
Um, so do we, do we wanna get their concept approval?
I'm, I'm gonna bring it over to them and see what they think, I mean, really, I think.
And then you're gonna give us an outline for the next meeting?
Yes, yes, I'll come back with some, with actually something other than me just talking for ten minutes, um.
So do you need anything from us tonight?
Just concept.
No, well, just, just as long as.
No, do you wanna vote on anything, that's what I'm asking.
No, no, definitely not, um.
So is Sally in the motion? To show them a working committee?
Um, not yet, next time, next time.
Okay.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
So wait, so wait, there's two, there's two things, one.
She'll move to give Brian the authority.
Uh, Katie had a question, are we withdrawing the motion, was that your question, Katie?
I need, no, actually, um, my personal life experience, um, with IT people, um, is that frequently drawn into their employment contracts are, are agreements that, um, they will not create something that only they can manipulate, or they can manipulate from a ro- remote, remotely when they leave their position, and if they violate their contract, there are substantial fiscal, um, penalties for doing so.
Sure.
Cool.
Okay, interesting.
That is, is my.
Yeah, I, I think, I think you have to do that, uh, as an employer would, that any technical kind of company would do, that anything you develop while you're working for the village belongs to the village.
Yeah.
And there's no question about that.
We'll talk to the town about that, cause that's one of the issues they're having currently.
Well, eh, you know, and then also, this is just perhaps, depending on the timing of, if this is something that we wanna develop over a long period of time, that's fine, but, you know, our history of intermunicipal agreements, and this'll be another one, and this will be the first time we do it, so.
Right. Right.
I, I like the whole idea, but don't be too optimistic that in ten minutes we can put this agreement together, cause
Right. I agree.
we haven't been able to do any of the other ones that fast, so just keep that in mind.
I know. Well, this, this actually goes into my second thing, but, uh, there was one other little piece that. Well, well, it's fine for now, so, so I'll, okay, as long as everyone's interested in whatever, oh, what I was gonna say is, I think that if we can do the online bill pay, if that can be like a, a year out goal or a two year out goal, the, the savings we'll see in it
Oh, yeah.
will, will definitely pay for what we're gonna get.
Are you talking about like paying your taxes and water bill and all of that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and, and having the ability to opt out of paper statements and having the ability to just pay online, I think, you know, it, it'd just be huge, so, and I think, yeah, I think a lot of people would go for it, not everybody, but.
People would love that. I would pay online.
Do you have to be able to provide receipts, that, that?
Yes.
I do everything paperless, but I have my mortgage.
Elliot, I was about to figure out how to do it for Elmo Bill.
Hmm?
Elliot, I was about to figure out how to do it, yeah, the county controller, so it's just a matter of the technology being in place and we can.
Oh, I see. Cool. Cool.
Right, alright.
He cleared all the, so, so financial controls, he cleared it with everybody, like.
So let, let's look into programs for that, that's actually on the budget twenty thirteen list, isn't it?
Yeah.
Cool.
Oh, good, so I, I would say if that's the case, and that's gonna be an element of what we do in any event, then hopefully the town will go in with us and do this, but if they don't, I think we should look into it anyway.
Yeah, I would love to as well.
Agreed.
Okay, so the second thing that I put on the agenda is, uh, a joint town and village committee, and this, the idea came to me from the one thing that we actually really easily had solved, working with the town and village for the last year, was when the two of you went
I knew that, you were gonna say.
and met with Jeff and, um.
Stuart, come on, wanna be the committee?
Uh, Je- Jeff and Kevin, well, no, okay, so, so really what it would be is, the committee meets once a month, it's two members from our board, it's two members from their board, and we have, what, six intermunicipal agreements, so that could be most of the discussion.
Right.
Um, the committee rotates, so one month it's two, the next month it's another two, and it goes around like that.
I like it.
And it's just, you know, no, no grandstanding, no craziness, just you go, you meet, you have a discussion, you bring it back to the board, and then the board can vote, and we don't have to, I mean, it's so hard getting everyone together in one room and then having everyone have the chance to talk, and then, you know, it just, it becomes an escapade, but really, we could probably simmer it down and.
For that, for that.
I like this a lot.
For that concept to work, though, the, the people had this particular month and they had the meeting, there had to be a detailed report about minutes or whatever from that meeting, so the next month, they, they know what, where we standing, you don't go back to the drawing board again.
I have a suggestion on that.
Okay.
No, I know, I know how to solve that issue, it would be like, if we were, if we were going, we were on a rotation, month number, January would be Brian and Sally, and then February would be Sally and Jason, and then March would be Jason and you, and then.
They have overlap.
Exactly, so that there'd always be somebody who had been to the last meeting, going to the next meeting
Right, you do two, two months.
Right.
in order for there to be continuity, and therefore you don't have to worry about these detailed reports and playing catch up, because somebody will always know.
At least you should have minutes.
Yeah, there should be minutes.
But when you, when you are doing all of this getting ready, will you include the clerk getting so that, that she make, you know, when you're developing the, since she controls the website, since she is the, the one who, and only she has the password.
Oh, for the website stuff?
Yeah, all that stuff.
Oh.
Yeah, that's, oh, we, we're back to, that's that.
It's all her in.
Yeah, we're back to the website, no, we're on, we're on, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Uh, I'll go, I'll go, yeah, scroll that for you.
Um, yeah, I love this idea, and I, and I actually am now thinking that maybe, I mean, I I know we all love meetings, just as much as the next person, but I'm thinking that maybe it would be wise of us to go back to our two meeting a month schedule and use our workshop meeting as that meeting instead, since our workshop meetings really aren't just regular meetings at this point.
I mean, I'm, I'm interested, I, I'm here.
This is completely separate proposal, but.
I'm here, yeah.
Excuse me, but workshop meeting this coming month has a lot of stuff on it, cause we've gotta go over the boards, the claims, zoning definitions, just so you know.
Well, this isn't. I mean, this isn't going into effect next week?
No.
Okay, I just wanted to point that out, so nobody got upset.
I, I was thinking we could do it at reorg with the workshop meeting.
Oh, but we need to, well, okay.
What is it that you'd like for this one, Brian?
I just wanted to know if, before I like go to the town and talk to them about it and draw something up and spend time doing it, for good, if you guys were all thinking it's a good idea, I would follow it.
I think it's good.
I, yeah, I agree.
I, yeah, no, I like that process.
Cool.
Sure.
Get our, go ahead.
Ju- just for the matter, I'm sorry, just for the matter of the record, would it be, be intention to have that meeting also filmed?
No, I, I would say just an, like an open meeting, um, you know, not, not a clerk required, but open to the public, advertised on the calendar, but probably not like, you know, not needed to be filmed.
And who knows, maybe the town will insist on it, and it'll just be something that it's negotiated, that they had the thing set up.
Yeah.
Cause if it's all, the details are still up in the air, there's no way to know yet.
Well, let's not worry about problems till we know we're half problems, go forth.
Yeah, I'm going, I'll see you guys later.
Okay, um.
Cool, thank you.
Uh, I moved, but we, dot bills and claims, start with you now.
Um, are these included, are we gonna talk about?
Those are included.
Okay, let's talk about them.
I'll second for purposes of discussion.
Thank you, Brian, thank you for that, that part, that was money raised by the hundred and twenty fifth folks.
Yeah, but it was never ever presented as being used for the bonfire.
It was presented to, well, not to the board, no, the entire mon- money of that account is, was raised by the DBA members, I think, and that was the understanding, was the expenses that.
And my understanding is that they were going to give that, the, any remaining money left in that account to family, and I don't think that would matter.
That was never the agreement, yeah.
Well, I'm just telling you what, I was on the committee.
Yeah.
That was my understanding, that the money, they were gonna have a meeting and decide what to do with the remaining money left over from the hundred and twenty fifth.
And I think what was, I can't remember again, cause this is, you know, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, um, the consensus among the, the folks who had donated was it was gonna be used for future events like that, so it was put in the regatta fund, and that doesn't use all of it, that uses some of it.
That's not the regatta fund number.
Well, then I'll just pull it off the agenda, if you, if you have these concerns about just volunteer money, then I'll just deal, I'll figure it out some other time.
Yeah. No, the only thing I'd like. I'd like, I would like the hundred and twenty fifth committee to tell us in writing that this is okay.
Can I see this?
Mm-hmm, yeah, three hundred bucks for banners and some things, um, alright, so, so, so all that, um.
I'll move those and claims, oh, they have been moved.
This has been moved and seconded, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, and these are not a part of it?
Yeah, correct. Those have got their piles open.
Aye.
Uh, and you have something about, uh, number five, Sally, you have a question?
Uh, just, just, I think this is a great idea, because I believe that it must be a pain to be the village clerk and have to go get checks for, I know when we went to the Nikon conference, what a pain it was, and it would've been just so much easier if the clerk had had a credit card, and she could've just done it that way.
Mm-hmm.
Now, is the credit card going to be in the name of the clerk?
Thanks.
It was the treasurer's, um, suggestion that it should be in the name of the current clerk, um, locked up, locked up when not in use
Okay.
and be caught that, it should be in the clerk's name, because the treasurer has the check and balance to that, so if the clerk were to generate charges, the clerk would then hand over everything to the treasurer, um, for vetting.
And then it would get recycled again, I'll move it.
Okay, I'll second, you'll second, any discussion?
I'll second, I'll, I'll second.
I, I just have one, um, comment, I, I think, uh, it would be wise to put in this authorization a limit, um.
I like that.
'Cause someday a hundred years from now we may have a clerk that you know would run up to a hundred thousand dollars or something uh so I I.
Well no, we would order that, we ordered it monthly.
Well I guess so, but you only need one time. Um so I I asked Katie about it and I suggest would five thousand dollars be sufficient, I think she thinks it is at the the top, so I I would be willing to be in favor of it as long as
That's fine.
there's a limit which I suggest be five thousand dollars.
Five thousand?
Yeah, sounds fair to me.
I think yeah because if we make it too little, I mean you know some of the Nikon conferences
Yeah.
two people go.
If multiple board members went, the conference, the s- the lodging.
Yeah.
And yeah, yeah. And the the things that you said locked up in your name, would you have that in the minutes?
Absolutely.
Okay, the process and.
Yeah.
And it's also useful now that we're getting we'll have probably regular.
And I'll accept the friendly amendment of five thousand.
Sorry.
Mm-hmm.
With a five thousand dollar limit, yeah.
Uh simple things like uh you know software upgrades now is so much easier to just put on credit number and download what you need
Um.
instead of waiting four to six weeks.
It The Google the Google Docs update that the board had directed to me to I was gonna be using my own credit card because that kind of thing doesn't have or some of the books I ordered from Amazon I used my own credit card because we just didn't have.
Then lastly, that Katie issue could get into trouble, it is better that the village have the credit card
That's why you.
it be in your name with a limit.
Yeah.
Well with the at the with the advice of the.
And as the monthly bills come in, we'll I mean attach all receipts and all the proper process and it will be audited.
Oh absolutely.
Okay.
So just make sure that if you'd go to Vegas you'd take me and Sally.
Who who seconded my motion?
I do.
Ariana.
So will you accept the friendly?
Of course, I I already said that I would.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
To make sure, wait wait, just make before you vote, let me make sure that I have everybody's input and it's perfect.
Yeah.
Um Sally's moving to authorize um the clerk's office specifically in the name of that clerk at that time um to have a credit card, um it's to be kept locked up when it's not be not in use and it has a five thousand dollar limit, does that agree with everyone's?
Yeah, and I
You mean locked up in the vault?
And I assume we're gonna give, you know
Yes.
You might as well say in the vault.
not all credit cards are the same so you'll get the best deal that there won't be a charge every month even if we don't use it and most you'll look into all that.
The The treasurer will assist in making that choice based on.
Right.
Yeah, I'm sending it on the annual fee.
Yeah, put it in the vault Katie, if that's the way.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I get one through?
Hmm?
Can I get one through?
Absolutely not.
Are you going after the clerk?
Not after your intention and condition.
Are we voting?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Sally, what was your you had a amendment to the minutes of which minutes?
Oh, I wanted to take the ninth off because they're joint.
What's next? Right, that that's true, there's there was something on the top there.
Yep.
And on the minutes of the twenty third
Give me one second.
I would like it noted that the board members received
Just give me one second to pop over there Sally so it's perfect down.
um. Pardon?
Let me let me just jump over to those minutes right now so it's fixed.
Oh, okay.
Sally, what would you like me to add?
I would like to add that in after the statement by Mister Potti that he presented a pu- a copy of the publication to each board member.
That does deserve between the minutes.
It really does.
Um and yeah, which I have the name of the
I think we all think so for different reasons.
Yeah, exactly.
It's there Sally, I'll um you'll see the dri- the you'll see the how it's nicely put in by tomorrow morning.
Alright.
Pardon?
I'll I'll inject it nicely into the minutes by tomorrow morning.
And the you know if you wanna put the magazine's name in, that's fine with me.
Actually, I would I I didn't happen to receive one so I don't have the names, we'll leave it there.
Was it, I think we shouldn't really put the name on it.
You can have mine.
Yeah, put the name in.
It was
No, thank you.
Flap.
Flap?
What F L?
C H W A P, flap.
T H W A P, T H W A P.
Yeah. Right, is that is that right, yeah?
Okay.
Check it, you've got a copy.
I'm not and I could.
Mine's mine's in my office, you can see uh.
You can just send me an email, we're good.
Alright.
I'll hear I have the minutes.
Never left the building.
I'll move the minutes.
Give me one second to pop back into the other menu Sally.
Both sets? Both sets?
Hmm?
The sixteen, alright, I'll second that, any discussion?
Sixteen, twenty third. No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, uh Stuart, you wanted to hold off on the fracking one?
Well, we have a a choice to make, um legally we've done everything we have to on the third anti-fracking law, the one that's part of our zoning, the the ban from our zoning ordinance. Today, this afternoon, we got the the response from the uh Ulster County Planning Board and they suggested they maybe we should to further support the idea it's mentioned in the local law that uh another reason for doing this is in support of our comprehensive plan which would be a further reason why we would want to not just use the police power but also do that.
Further that.
Uh sent that to Joe Ariel, he sent a response back which basically is we don't have to do that to pass that the time has gone by and we can act on it and and I think we've known from before that we can either take or not take the recommendation of the Ulster County Planning Board. So the question is do you want to take their suggestion and strengthen it, if so then language change would have to be made, Joe said we wouldn't have to start over again that we could our next we could have him give us that small revision and vote on it the next meeting or we could decide no thank you, we don't wanna add that and vote on it tonight, so that's your choice, uh I mean to me.
What do you think? What do you and Ariana wanna do?
I mean
I mean.
I mean I think it's very strong as it is, isn't it?
I I yeah, I I mean I would I would really like to vote on this because I would really like to
You would as well.
I
move forward with.
I I tend to have the conservative point of view, I mean
I uh knew that you would.
I'm I'm looking you know ten years from now and the companies come up from Texas and say it's somebody who's getting paid five hundred dollars an hour find a way that we can open this up so that we can do what we wanna do and I think the the more this more solid that it is the less chances than doing it, so so that's philosophically what I what I would do, if everyone feels strongly gee we ought to do it tonight, well I'm fine with that too but having my druthers, I would wait.
Ariana wants to do it tonight, you don't?
I would I would rather vote on it, you know have him vote on it next Wednesday with this change in it.
Ken Ken, do you think that he would be able to put that in there, I mean we didn't ask him how long it would take him to you know do that but um.
Well you know it's two weeks from now, you know I'm not.
Well, no, actually this is a big deal because
All sorts of stuff is going on.
Things are happening right now. Um this is I mean I don't I I heard that the decision was delayed again but in terms of the timeframe test sites, test wells could be, the drilling could begin on February twenty eighth so I believe that we want to pass this.
We could always we could always do both, you know.
Will it not second?
Um just just do an amendment, if there's if there's things later on to be added to the law that we pass tonight.
Then just do another amendment amendment.
I didn't have the impression from Joe's memo and maybe I'm wrong he did not say I would do this.
Well we is our lawyer and we can ask him to do it.
No.
I mean he said he doesn't think it's necessary.
And he is our attorney and he thought it was necessary to do, I would think he would've said
No.
I think you best add this, he did not say that.
No, I I agree with that, I mean I don't I don't think it's needed to make this a valid law. It just doesn't strengthen it for the future, so I you know J- Jason's correct, we can pass it tonight and if we feel strongly that there's things we wanna add so if we can do it again and just be the expense of.
Yeah.
An extra grant.
I'd like I I would like to move to adopt the local law to prohibit natural gas and or oil exploration and extraction.
And I'll second you.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye.
Um.
Aye.
Great. So Congratulations.
Then
And you wanted to do this?
Yeah, I uh everyone should everyone should have in their packet, I uh suggested that the three people, the three professionals that helped us get to these three laws, the people who weren't getting paid for this but who volunteered their time because they believe in it, the uh hydro geologist Paul Rubin and the uh the two attorneys from Ithaca, David Slodgy and Helen Slodgy uh who worked on the drafting with and and who continued to provide us with information, I don't know if everyone's getting it but since I sent them some emails seem to have a weekly email about what's happening. But anyway, just uh an expression of our thanks for for helping us out and and I know that when I first spoke with him, he was kind of annoyed to some nearby municipalities had, you know, asked them for all kinds of help and he gave it to them and I didn't even thank him or anything
Nearby.
so I think I I think that it would be a good idea for us to uh to do this.
This is this is the man that told you.
That's the man who came.
He's the one who came and he was the
But who was the woman that told us about you to go share?
That was Paul and it was um that was Catherine Byncupper.
There's another person. Yes.
Yeah, so we have
Because you added her name. Oh you better write them
Yeah.
And I I can give you a smooth copy with that written into.
I don't if you ask me how to spell her name, I won't know.
Catherine House.
I know.
But I know you asked somebody.
I think that's what it is, I'll send it, I'll send it just.
Alright, so we're four people?
Right, remind me Katie tomorrow, I'll get I'll just text them an email uh cause she's coming.
Um I.
Okay, I also pulled these out of the vault for them in addition to the resolution.
I'd like to move the resolution of things and is it are those the certificates?
Yep.
Yeah, can we add one more?
This is so cute.
Of course, I'll happily do it tomorrow and then mayor will sign it for me.
Kidding? And and then some somebody from this group can write him a letter and here's your certificate, thank you and here's the resolution and you know.
I moved it. Well I think that's your go.
I'm happy to do it, but I'm happy to relinquish it too, so it doesn't matter.
Alright, it's been moved, is
I moved it.
Sally moved it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will make it Stuart writing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and uh Sally, you had a question or a concern about one of the two bills?
Oh, yes, um
Which bill was it? Do you have the page number, the page number in the packet, the ten two ten three?
The second one. I'm I'm the yeah, the Blues recommendation um
Oh, number ten, yeah, the second one, that's how I.
I did I get there. It is the second one, I
Okay, Mil- uh Mill Rock.
Yeah, I I'd like to move that we for um Church Street since we felt that it really was an outside water line, I'd like to move it.
Okay, I'll second that.
Whatever.
Any discussion?
Move the reimbursement?
Yeah.
Okay, tell what
Reimbursement.
Of sewer portion.
What what's the what's the difference between the two?
Well, one is this is a broken water that was charged sewer but the water never went into the meter.
Mm-hmm.
Okay for the sewer. This is a whole different thing.
Yes, agreed.
Well that's I mean I read them both, I'm just trying to figure out if if
One is saying
the owner could've could've kept that from happening.
One is saying I watered my grass and I was charged sewer for it and gee whiz, I'd like to be reimbursed and then be given a separate meter so I can continue to water my grass.
And so the answer.
Is that it Ariana?
You got it and I knew we were gonna think alike on this one.
So the So so the logical answer i- is probably to do what we've done other places that they can buy a separate water meter
Separate water meter, yeah, that's what Blue said.
and then and then pay it on that and and we have I I I think that's been done before.
Yeah, Blue said that many people throughout the vill- this that's what this is exactly what his memo said, many people throughout the village do exactly that
Yeah, right.
and that that would solve the issue because then you would be charged for just water and not sewer, yes.
And that's what they asked for too, they asked could they put in a separate meter, yes you can but you're gonna have to pay for it.
Yeah. At their expense.
The first thing is they ask for reimbursement.
Except, whoa whoa whoa, 'cause they might be right. Um because we built um people for sewer based on their water usage
Okay.
so if the if the water was coming out of the sprinklers and going into the lawn, it didn't cost us anything to treat it at the sewer plant, it's not going to the plant but we're charging them as if we were treating the water that was going into the grass, so they're not asking for a reduction in their water bill but in their sewer portion which we link to the water bills.
I understand that.
There's no way.
So, okay, I just wanna make sure.
Oh they then you know maybe we or we should do, I can think of one case in in uh particular where I know that the board has done that
Ah, okay.
is to go back in that case to see if we went backwards to give them a reimbursement or just forward.
We did not, I already checked.
So I think we ought to be consistent, that's whatever.
I already checked Stuart.
Okay, so what is it, you wanna do Sally?
I believe it is fine to allow them to install a separate water meter for the purposes of sprinkling, although I'm not sure I think this is a good precedent but number one, there is no way that I think we should try to average out their bills and I think they have to pay for what they have used now, both water and sewer.
I agree.
So is that the motion that's on the table, is there a second?
Yes.
Second.
Uh wait wait wait, we saw the motion from Sally that wasn't seconded at Church Street and to move to reimburse the sewer portion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um second.
Oh, I thought we voted on that.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
I.
Alright. Um Brian?
Good.
Everybody's in.
Okay, thank you, the uh so okay, so now we have the second motion about Mill Rock, um and it's been seconded, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm a no. Um alright, with that unless I'm forgetting something, I move to go into executive session to discuss contracts and uh well I guess it is all contracts.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
You got it, you think?
Think so.
Okay.
Lots of administrative work tonight.